Okay, good evening everyone and welcome to tonight's city council meeting. Could I please have Pastor Hammond come forward for the invocation?
Let's pray together. Heavenly Father, we thank you for the freedoms that we enjoy as Americans to gather in this place and discuss the business of our city. We ask your blessings upon this proceeding. We ask that you would lead us and guide us in a direction that would benefit all. We ask that you would give us the courage to show love and respect to one another, compassion for those in need, courage to hold on to the values of our forefathers, vision for the future. Give us wisdom for every decision, divine guidance to go forward and prosperity as our souls prosper. Give us your blessings as we acknowledge you and may Los Banos be a shining light in the midst of darkness. We ask these things in Jesus's name, amen.
Thank you Pastor. I'd like to call to order the meeting of October 2nd, the city council meeting of October 2nd, 2019. And Chief Reece, would you lead us in the pledge?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Roll call, Director Maloney?
Freya? Johnson Santos Jones? Louis Volalta?
Here, we do have a quorum. Consideration of approval of agenda, do I have a motion? Mr. Freya?
I'll move to approve the agenda as submitted.
Mr. Santos?
Second.
Motion by Freya, second by Santos to approve the agenda as stated, all in favor? Aye. Any opposition? None carried. Presentations. Certificate of recognition to David Santos Farming, or David Santos, as the agricultural business of the year 2019. David, would you come up here please?
We had a farm-to-table event, which was a huge success about a week ago, and all these secretaries came and they were presenting all these certificates to David and all these accolades. And I got up and I said, David, I don't have anything for you. And the reason I didn't is because one person at the chamber didn't talk to another person, another person didn't talk to someone in the city. So a certificate was not made out. So I felt really bad, but you know, this is two bites at the apple, David. You get to come here and you get to get recognized again, which I think is very worthy for you to come. You really do. David and I have known each other for over sixty years. And I can tell you during that time, David has grown up to be just a fine, fine citizen and also a huge, huge footprint in the farming industry in Los Banos. So we're lucky to have him in this community and very lucky that he stayed in Los Banos. And David, thank you for being my friend and thank you for coming this evening. And outstanding farmer of the year and business, David Santos.
Here, here, I appreciate the recognition and everything, but like I always say, God gave me the health to get out of bed and the mind to think things out. Without him, I couldn't go nowhere. So without his blessings, we have nothing. And the community's helped me through the years. Had a lot of good people worked with me and landlords and stuff like that. And things go up and down agriculture, like you guys know, but we were able to hang in there for fifty years next year.
Thank you, David. So next, I'd like to recognize October as Domestic Violence Prevention Awareness Month. And we have a couple of young ladies here this evening. And if you'd like to introduce yourselves?
Hi, I'm Liz Tyler.
Hi, and I am Brenda Martinez.
Well Liz and Brenda are here this evening to accept this proclamation of what I'd like to read at this time. And whereas one in three women and one in seven men have experienced some form of physical violence by an intimate partner in their lifetime. Children and the elderly are also counted among the victims. And whereas one in fifteen children are exposed to intimate partner violence each year, and ninety percent of these children are eyewitnesses to this violence. Domestic violence violates an individual's privacy, dignity, security, humanity, and affects the lives of individuals, families in our community and in the nation. And whereas the intimate partner violence is estimated to cost the United States economy between 5.8 billion and 12.6 billion annually, with the average of twenty people per minute experiencing this physical violence, this amounts to ten billion abuse victims annually. In the last year, the Valley Crisis Center has received six hundred and seven domestic violence hotline calls, has assisted in five hundred and sixty victims of domestic violence, and has sheltered eighty-seven men, women, and children, and has provided one thousand six hundred and twenty-five bed nights at their safe house, and has provided one thousand two hundred and seventy-six bed nights at their transitional homes. The Valley Crisis Center works to prevent domestic violence through programs aimed at creating protective environments and promoting healthy peer-to-peer relationships. It's not just treating the horrible effects of domestic violence, but trying to prevent it. Now therefore be it proclaimed that the mayor and the city council members of the city of Los Banos do hereby recognize the important work done by the staff and volunteers at the Valley Crisis Center and do hereby proclaim the month of October as Domestic Violence Prevention Awareness Month. The community is encouraged to actively educate themselves on this issue and explore how they can contribute to prevention efforts. And these two young ladies are here tonight to tell you about a few of the events that are going to happen in Los Banos.
Good evening, my name is Liz Tyler and I'm an advocate at Valley Crisis Center. This is Brenda Martinez, Valley Crisis Center's program manager. Thank you for recognizing October as Domestic Violence Awareness Month. To be aware of the impact of domestic violence in Los Banos, we must face the reality of domestic violence. Domestic violence is bruises and broken bones. Domestic violence is being threatened with guns and knives. Domestic violence is not being allowed to see your family and friends. Domestic violence is being told you are ugly, stupid, and a bad parent. It is being blamed for the violence your partner inflicts. It is not having access to bank accounts. It is being told no police or judge will believe you. It is being told if you leave this relationship, no one will ever love you. Domestic violence is terrifying, exhausting, and confusing. Domestic violence is many things, but it is not hopeless. Valley Crisis Center believes that we can end domestic violence in our community. From July 2018 to June 2019, five hundred and sixty victims of domestic violence sought services at Valley Crisis Center. If we have done our job, that is five hundred and sixty people in Los Banos who now know that their community cares about their safety and well-being. That is five hundred and sixty people who have at least a glimmer of hope that there is peace after domestic violence. We need our entire community to work towards peace for all families. We invite you to join us Wednesday, October 23rd at our annual Peace for Families March and Community Gathering. This event is an annual reminder of Los Banos's commitment to support survivors, end domestic violence, and build a community where all families can thrive. And I think that we have posters that will be distributed after. Thank you for your continued support.
Let's go on to item six, public forum. Members of the public may address the city council members on any item of interest that is within the jurisdiction of the city council, which includes agenda and non-agenda items. No action will be taken on non-agenda items and speakers are limited to a five-minute presentation. Detailed guidelines are posted on the council chamber informational table. And when you approach the podium, please state your name and your city of residence. And if you would, if you have a cellphone, please turn them off and put them on vibrate at this time. Is there anyone who wishes to speak at the public forum?
Yes, Mayor and council members, my name is Michael Hughes. I'm the commander of the VFW in Los Banos and I live in Los Banos and have for quite a few years. I'd like to talk to you about a couple of events that are going to be happening in the very near future in Los Banos. On Thursday, October 24th, we're going to have a veterans town hall meeting at the Veterans Memorial Hall at 615 E Street. This meeting was set up by the National VA. It's open to the public, it's open to all veterans. We're going to have people there that are going to set up information about what's available to veterans. There's going to be representatives from the Veterans Benefit Administration, the Central California Healthcare System, the National Cemetery. The topics that will be included will be the Mission Act for the VA and what they're trying to do in the, in different communities, patient experiences, employee satisfaction, community care, facility planning, and parking issues at the facilities where the veterans go to get their treatment. One of the complaints with a lot of veterans is they don't have the transportation to get to Fresno, Palo Alto, or other places to get their services. One of the things that, we've been in contact with the Secretary of the VA. They're working on trying to open more clinics. One of the things, one of the big issues at this meeting is going to be talking about a facility possibly in the Los Banos area to add for the west side of the county. Because right now, the closest clinic is Merced. The closest hospital is in Fresno or Palo Alto. So you've got, you've got a long way to go, they've got a long time, it takes them... Anybody going to the VA to an appointment now, they gotta figure they're going to be gone three or four hours to get this done. So there are some real positive things coming out of it. This will take place from five to six for the information fair and six to seven. They want people to come, they want them to express their opinions, they'll answer questions and do that. The second thing that we have going on is in November, the 21st of November, we're supposed to have the ribbon cutting for the pod that's being put at the Veterans Memorial Hall. Now, when I say a pod, a lot of people are saying, well, what is a pod? They're going to put in a telemed pod where people, veterans can come in there, they can make an appointment, they can come there, they can speak with their doctor over a television screen, they're going to be able to do their blood pressure, they'll be able to do some ultrasounds, some other things that they'll be able to do. So it's the future of medicine and there are three of these that are going in in the United States. There's one in Pennsylvania, one in someplace in Montana that's a million miles from anywhere, and one in Los Banos. So Los Banos is very lucky. And on that day, the Secretary of the VA is supposed to be here. He tells us he's going to be here to do the ribbon cutting. So we're really excited about that. We're really excited about what is happening with Los Banos. Six years ago, we talked to them about coming to Los Banos to do one of these meetings and they just kind of blew us off. Well, today, it was their idea, they want to put it forth and they came to us and wanted to know if we'd help them with it. So we're happy to do that. I know there's several homeless veterans in town, we've been trying to get them in. They're going to have a stand-down this Friday in Merced. We've offered to guard their carts while they're gone. They're going to pick them up by a bus on Friday morning and take them to Merced. We're going to lock them up in our yard, the carts. So, you know, we're trying to do what we can to get the services for the veterans. Anybody have any questions? If not, I'm going to leave flyers with Lucy for all of you, you can see this. Hopefully, all of you can come. If not all of you, some of you can at least come to the meeting because I think it's going to be very productive for Los Banos.
Well, just let me say, Mike, nothing happens without a local push. So thank you. And we all know how things get done. And if you don't ask, you don't get. And so thank you for asking, thank the vets for their coordination and all the officers there. We get put on the map because of local input, so thank you very much.
And it's a big thing because, you know, a lot of veterans don't have the transportation. A lot of them don't have the transportation to get over to these places to get their services. And the other thing, remember, November 2nd, the Veterans Parade.
Yep, we'll be there.
And we thank the city for all of your cooperation because without you, we couldn't do it. And we're so happy to, it's been like a seamless approach this year. We've had not one glitch in anything, so I want to thank you.
Two oh nine, five oh nine, I won't give you the rest of the phone number. Okay, right there, okay?
He's done a great job at getting this done, we haven't had one problem, so.
Fantastic, good to hear, thank you.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor and city council members. Rhonda Boe, UC Merced, Small Business Development Center, Business Coach.
I'm here tonight to let you know we have two opportunities this month for our local businesses to promote and grow their business, and nothing makes me happier than to have those available. The first one is going to be on October 10th and in partnership with the city... And in partnership with the city of Los Banos, we'll have our third Business to Business Expo. It'll be held at the community center from nine to 3:00 PM. We're going even a little bit longer this time. And we have some new businesses coming this time and we still have plenty of room for other businesses to come. It's free. You don't have to pay anything to be there to promote your business. You have a table to set up. And we're gonna do some introductions like what we did before. Where we actually talk about what our businesses can do for each other. So we'll introduce our products and services and give people a chance to get to know our businesses because together, working together and supporting each other, our community grows as a whole. So that's on October 10th from nine to 3:00 PM and at the community center. The next one is our new business, wait, what's the name of it? It's just a brand new one. It's a, a Boost Your Business series that we're starting. And our first one's gonna be October 17th and it'll be at the Police Annex. And that's from 6:00 PM to 8:00 PM. And it's a 10 Things Every Retailer Needs to Know. And so we're gonna help people that maybe are new retailers, maybe people that are thinking about going into retailing, the things that they need to know in order to be a good retailer and to be a vibrant part of our community. So that's October 17th from 6:00 PM to 8:00 PM. And again, that's a free, another free workshop.
That's across the street?
Mm-hmm. At the Police Annex.
Police Annex.
And I'll give these to Lucy to pass out to you for the business expo.
Okay. Do you have something for the Annex, too?
Yeah.
Okay.
But I can get it to you.
Would you get it to us and put it, and then they'll put it in each of our boxes?
I will.
Okay, thank you. Is there anyone else who wishes to speak at the public forum?
I'm Elaine Corey, Los Banos, and I want to state my opinion against the P-Bid. The city was supposed to be neutral when this thing started. They were going to do a survey to see what the owners wanted when it was favorable or not. But that's not exactly the way it worked out. The city had two paid people working to push this thing through. The city reimbursed Sharon Silva's wages and Stacy spent an awful lot of time pushing it. That, to me, is not neutral. The other thing that really bothers me is when you didn't have enough votes to push it through, you changed the boundaries of the district. And was that because all of the owners on H Street were no? Or was that because wool growers whispered in Greg Hostetler's ear and he whispered in Sharon's ear? Sharon's explanation was that there was no economic benefit to H Street property owners. There's two bars, or there's a bar, two restaurants, and a retail business. And if that's the case, then there's no benefit to any of the offices, beauty parlors, service business, banks. Their clients are gonna come to them whether you do anything or not. It doesn't matter to them whether we paint our buildings or do anything. These are old buildings and no amount of paint is gonna change that. It's gonna take major, major overhaul to change the structures. And that brings us to the grant programs. If this is such a good thing, then why were Tom Calgen and Taylor Wolfson's the first ones to benefit? And this came out of Tom Calgen's mouth at the June 27th owners meeting that he and Taylor both got 20,000 to paint their buildings. If it was so good, couldn't he have left that money there to be used for something to benefit everybody downtown? Are they too poor to pay for their own paint jobs? And this is definitely against the bylaws and the mission statement for the Downtown Association, which is a nonprofit status. When that thing was formed in 2013, it specifically states that it is absolutely not to benefit any person or any member. And to me, painting an individual's building is benefiting a specific person. I'm against the city's mismanagement. You always hire consultants and you have lots of great book smarts and lots of ideas, but no common sense. How many times have you changed the trees? At least four times. Is that because you didn't tell a pollinator from a non-pollinator and we had messy trees so you had to go back and change them out again? You've changed the streetlights twice. And that's because you forgot to check the height of the trees and you forgot that we're gonna grow and cover the lights so it looks like a ghost town downtown. The other thing is, you killed all the mom and pops downtown. You pushed everybody to the shopping steners and you wanted the big box doors because they were gonna bring all the revenue to the city. Well, now what do you want us to do? Pay for your mistakes? And you love grant money, but you forget grants, once they're built, have to be maintained. Your rail trail is a prime example of that. Where are all the shops and the housings that we promised with that? Nothing has come to pass. I just don't have any faith that the city is going to do anything that's gonna benefit the downtown business owners other than cost us money and have more bureaucracy. So we're gonna hire a director and two or three assistants for her whoopee.
Is there anyone else who wishes to speak at the public forum? Not seeing or hearing anyone, I will now close the public forum, bring them back to council level, and we will go on to item seven, consideration for approval of consent agenda. Items on a consent agenda are considered to be routine and voted on in one motion unless removed from the consent agenda by a city council member. And tonight, we have?
Items on the consent agenda are as follows. Warrant numbers 218-099 through 218-327 in the amount of $1,361,111.48. City Council Resolution Number 6132, amending the fiscal year 2019, 2020 budget as it pertains to the expenditure of a cabin chassis with 240 hook lift system in the amount of $133,710.45. City Council Resolution Number 6133, approving the recertification of the City of Los Banos Sewer System Management Plan. City Council Resolution Number 6134, authorizing the city manager to develop and submit an application for statewide park development and community revitalization program grant funds. City Council Resolution Number 6135, approving closure of non-essential city offices on December 24th and 31st, 2019. And the items are to be approved as submitted.
Is there any city council member who would like to remove an item for discussion? Mrs. Lewis? You have to, you have to put press in. Now you did. Thank you.
No, I'm not requesting an item, but if there are no requests from other city council members, I'd like to make a motion.
Go for it.
Yes, Mr. Mayor, I'd like to make a motion to approve the consent agenda as submitted.
Mrs. Santos?
Second.
Motion by Lewis, second by Santos to approve the consent agenda as stated. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposition? None carried. Public hearing. If you challenge the proposed action described herein in court, you may be limited to raising only those issues you or someone else raised at the public hearing described herein or in written correspondence delivered to the city at or prior to the public hearing. I am going to read this agenda item and then the city attorney and I are going to excuse ourselves because we have a conflict of interest because we own property downtown. Public hearing. To receive public comment, consideration regarding the formation of the Los Banos Downtown Property and Business Improvement District, LBDP BID, and the levy assessment. Item A68A1, City Council Resolution Number 6136, establishing the Los Banos Downtown Property and Business Improvement District, approving the assessment formula and levying the assessments. And we are gonna go to, I think Director Elms. Okay? If you can do this.
So now before they, now that they've gotten a chance to leave, I do have to read a piece here and I have to read it exactly, so please bear with me. This is the time and place for the hearing of the formation of the Los Banos Downtown Property and Business Improvement District. Before we begin, there are, are there any disclosures relating to this hearing? Okay, if there are none, Ms. Maloney, have the notices and ballots as required by law been, been mailed to recorded owners of each parcel within the proposed district?
Yes, they have.
Thank you. Ms. Maloney, have you brought to the hearing all ballots that you have received on this matter?
Yes, I have.
Thank you. Will the representative of the community Economic Development Department summarize the action before us, please?
Thank you, Ms. Mayor Protem. So there's a PowerPoint presentation with this particular item. There we go. Perfect. Okay, so just an overview. The Los Banos Downtown Property and Business Improvement District is a benefit assessment district whose main goal is to provide improvements and activities which would provide a special benefit to the assessed parcels. This approach has been successful in other cities throughout the country to provide special benefits to property owners, namely increased sales, attraction of new tenants, increased occupancies, and specifically increased property values. And just in California alone, over 200 cities have established P-Bids, Property and Business Improvement Districts. Just in the Central Valley, we have communities that are known for their downtowns such as Clovis, Hanford, Fresno. We have Turlock, Modesto. The city of Merced, the actual city of Merced is the project proponent. They are, the city themselves is hiring a consultant to put together the formation of a P-Bid. There's Lodi, many, many, many cities, not only in the Central Valley, but throughout the state of California. And when you look at a successful downtown, typically that common thread throughout those successful downtowns are because they have a sustainable funding source such as a P-Bid. So just some background on how we got to where we are today. A coalition of property owners and the Los Banos Downtown Association, under the direction of Sharon Silva with SS Consulting, decided to pursue an establishment of the Los Banos Downtown Property and Business Improvement District in order to create a revenue source dedicated to providing special benefits to assessed property owners. Really how this all began was Sharon came to Los Banos. Jean Lieb found her in Las Vegas. She was retired. And made a phone call and she came to Los Banos to do a workshop in December of 2017. And her and I, that day, that first day, we took a walk in our downtown. She had asked me, hey, can we take a tour? I really wanna see. She had lived here years before and she really wanted to see how the downtown has evolved. And so her and I went through and she saw the Crest Theater and just how remarkable it is and how beautiful it would be to be rehabbed. The, the fountain at the drugstore, just some iconic places. The Bellotti Building, for instance, just some iconic buildings. And so we, we went through, we assessed, and really what Sharon's evaluation was, you have some really good potential here in your downtown and you have great opportunities. Let's, let's have a workshop. And she was gonna be presenting that night. And, you know, let's see where this goes. So she had done another workshop in April where the community was invited and really Sharon focused on beautification. Successful downtowns need beautification, rehab, revitalization. They need activity. They need marketing and they need economic development. And so the property owners came back after that workshop and said, we want those things. How, how do we get that started? We need a sustainable funding source. And that's really what kicked off this whole movement. So on April 17th, 2019, the city council directed staff to proceed forward with the process of the P-Bid and partner with the Los Banos Downtown Association to prepare a management district plan and engineer's report to form the Los Banos Downtown Property and Business Improvement District. So with that direction, staff partnered with Civitas. We have a representative here today, Jordan Pittman, from Civitas, who has helped us with preparing a business management plan and also has incorporated an engineer's report within which the law requires. On August 7th, the city council adopted Resolution 6115, authorizing the city manager to sign a petition and assessment ballot. Petitions were received at that time from more than 50% of the district assessment budget. So then the city council then adopted Resolution 6116, declaring its intention to form the Los Banos Downtown Property and Business Improvement District, which began the notice and Proposition 218 process. Sorry, I skipped through those. So the location of the boundary is K Street up to, it's I Street up to the properties fronting I Street. It's up to Fifth Street and up to Seventh Street. And that's the main core of downtown. And as previously mentioned in the public forum, the, the boundary was, as it is recommended, this was a recommendation from Civitas to create a more linear boundary and also to look at the core downtown business district. So the purpose was to provide activities and improvements as a special benefit to assessed parcels. So that's what a P-Bid does. And it also provides maintenance and general security, marketing and placemaking, and small infrastructure programs directly and only to assess parcels within the boundaries. And within your staff report is the management plan, which distributes the budget in those four categories, which this is next. So the annual assessment for the initial year of its five-year operation is anticipated to be over $146,000. And the annual budget may be subject to an increase in assessment rates of no more than 2.5% per year, but that is up to the property owners, which would be managing the district. And the assessment is based on a parcel square footage. The standard is 27 cents a square foot and the government rate is 20 cents a square foot. And this slide shows the breakdown, as I previously said, of the budget. So it's in the four categories. It's all broken into 25% for maintenance, marketing and placemaking, small infrastructure, and operations. So things as maintenance are power washing of sidewalks and cleaning of downtown. Marketing and placemaking are for events and activities. It's for a new website. It's just to bring awareness to downtown and get folks to come downtown. Small infrastructure for items like bench equipment or the seasonal banner flags that are on the light poles. And then the operations are to run the downtown and to run the P-Bid as well as the association. The duration of the proposed district would be a five-year lifespan, beginning January 1st, 2020, and ending December 31st, 2024. Near the end of the term, if the property owners decide to renew, it would require a petition and a ballot process all over again with the city council, with the hearing process, to be renewed. So it's just not an automatic renewal. It would have to come through the Proposition 218 process. It would need to be petitions before that for the district to even be considered for So the management of the proposed district, the Los Banos Downtown Property Owners Association would serve as the owners' association for the Los Banos Downtown Property, Business, and Improvement District. And an executive board would be developed with property owners. The law does require one non-property owner, so it has to be a community member to be a part of that board. But it would be a majority of property owners to sit and to determine how the funds are to be spent and to be an oversight to make sure that the funds are spent in accordance with the management plan. The district formation process, so this is essentially the timeline and what is required by law to take place. So first, a resolution of intention, which this item has been completed. This is upon the submission of written petition of more than 50% of the assessment to be levied. The city council may initiate proceedings to form a district by adopting a resolution expressing its intention to form a district. And that was completed on August 7th. And that was incl- completed on August seventh. The next step is a notice and proposition two eighteen ballot. Um, this was completed. This requires the city to mail written notice and assessment ballots to the owners of all property proposed to be assessed. Mailing the notice and assessment ballot begins a mandatory forty-five day period in which owners may cast ballots. And this was done on August sixteenth. And then the final step is a final public hearing, and that's what's before you tonight. The council will open a public hearing to receive public testimony. At the close of the public hearing, council will direct tabulation of ballots and determine whether there is a majority protest against the assessment. And if there is no majority protest, the council may adopt a resolution declaring the results of the majority protest. Proceedings inform the Los Banas Downtown Property, Business and Improvement District. Or if there is a majority protest, the district shall not be formed and the assessment shall not be imposed. So the fiscal impact of this item to the city, uh, so proposition two eighteen states that no parcel is exempt from assessments if they receive benefit from the improvements and activities. The proposed annual assessment for city property for fiscal year nineteen twenty is estimated to be seventeen thousand seven hundred and forty-four dollars and twenty cents. And so within the staff report, including, uh, within the resolution, if the formation, uh, moves forward, staff is requesting a budget amendment to increase expenditures to the Community and Economic Development Department for downtown promotions in the amount of fourteen thousand, four hundred and seventy-four dollars and twenty cents. And that's because there is a remaining, uh, over three thousand dollars left in fiscal year nineteen twenty. Um, this is for the portion of the downtown banners. Um, it is assumed that if the P bid should pass, that the P bid would absorb the cost of the downtown banners, the seasonal banners, that the city currently covers that cost of over ninety-four hundred dollars. Um, so that would be a cost that would be absorbed should the property owners decide to carry that forward, but the city would no longer be covering that expense. So I'm going to end with, uh, just some reasons why to form the Los Banas Business Downtown, excuse me, Los Banas Downtown Property and Business Improvement District. And these are all contained within the, uh, business management plan. So first, they've been shown that they allow property owners to lead and shape future services and improvements through the Los Banas Downtown Property, Business Improvement District. It, they would attract, it would attract new business and investment throughout Los Banas. It create an opportunity for private and public partnership with a unified voice for Los Banas Downtown. And it would be an opportunity to establish private sector management and accountability. So with that, staff is recommending that the Los Banas City Council first, open the public hearing and then close the public hearing, request the city clerk to tabulate the ballots. And then if there is majority support, adopt resolution number six one three six as read by title. And that concludes my presentation. I'm here to answer any questions.
Thank you very much, Director Elms. Um, so we now will hear from any interested persons in the audience who wish to speak on this matter. Is there anyone? Okay. And next, we, under the law, under the law, any person who filed a written ballot may withdraw or change that ballot until the close of public testimony. I will ask that any person who wishes to withdraw or otherwise change their sealed ballot come to the podium, identify themselves, and obtain their ballot. You wish to come up? Does the staff have any comments or responses to the testimony? The oral testimony part of the hearing is now closed. Now is the time to calculate and compute the ballots. If a majority protest exists, then the city, the council cannot renew the P bid. A majority protest exists, uh, per, excuse me, a majority protest exists if ballots submitted in opposition to the assessment exceeded, the ballots submitted in favor of the assessment. In tabulating the ballots, the ballots shall be weighed according to the proportional financial obligation of the affected property. The city clerk shall act as the impartial person to tabulate the ballots, which shall be open to the public. We now continue this matter to allow the staff to calculate the vote. Once the vote has been calculated and checked, please provide the city council with the official results and the, then we will con- ravine, sorry, reconvene on this matter. We will now take recess while the ballots are being tabulated. Short recess, please.
I will now reconvene the Los Banos Downtown Property and Business Improvement District Hearing for the purpose of determining the ballot vote. Ms. Melanie, what is the result of the vote count?
The ballots have been tabulated and it equaled a 62.58% yes votes in the dollar amount of $64,927.05. And there was a 37.42% no votes. And that dollar amount tallied up to $38,818.44.
Thank you very much. The votes support the renewal of the P bid and the ballots submitted proposed opposed to the P bid do not exceed the ballots submitted in favor of the P bid. This means the council may adopt the resolution to renew the P bid and approve the assessment. Do I have a motion by council for the resolution number 6136? Resolution from the City Council of the City of Los Banos establishing the Los Banos Downtown Property and Business Improvement District approving the assessment formula and leaving and levying the assessments. Councilmember Jones?
Yes, I'd like to make a motion.
Sorry.
I'd like to make a motion to approve City Council Resolution Number 6136 as submitted.
Thank you. Do I have a second? Councilmember Lewis?
Second.
Thank you very much. First by Jones, second by Lewis. And then we'll open the discussion. Oh, okay. Sorry, I opened that right now. Is that correct? I'm sorry.
Once you have a motion on a second.
Okay, gotcha. So I'm going to, oh, I mean, council, no, no. All right, so I'm going to open up for discussion and jump in there. Got it? Sorry, let me get that together. Gotcha. Mr. Faria, please.
Thank you, Mayor Toot. First of all, I'm not comfortable voting on this without an attorney sitting in the city attorney's seat. He had to step out and I would like to see us have an attorney for nothing else than parliamentary procedure. Moving on, though, the, could someone answer why we cut out the H Street area from the P bid area?
Yes, so that was based on a recommendation from Civitas, which is the consultant the city hired to help us with the formation of the P bid. Prior to, to the boundary that was within the management plan that you see before you today, it, the boundary picked and choose areas. It had Sixth Street, Ice Street, parts of J Street and parts of K Street, which Civitas had said, no, you need direct boundaries, you need straight boundaries, and also you need to look at the core downtown district, which is mainly Sixth Street and Ice Street. There is the flanking streets as well that have core, core businesses. But in terms of the improvements, the improvements of small infrastructure, seasonal signages and things that the P bid would be absorbing, that's not on H Street. They don't have that type, same type of infrastructure. And so with that, they would not have the same benefits. And that's where the recommendation was to tighten the boundary district.
Thank you very much. And then a final comment. Just because we can do something, I don't think we necessarily should do something. Even though there's only 32% against, my concern is that if we go ahead with this, we're going to have a 32% contingency of opposition to everything we try and everything we do in that downtown area. And I, I do not recommend, I would not recommend setting up a, especially a situation where people are paying a tax, something resembling a tax, a fee to an organization when you have, you know, one-third of the group in opposition, landowners in opposition. So I'm just letting you know, I can't support going, doing this at this time. And that's all I have to say.
Thank you very much. Any other comments from council? Okay, so we go to a roll call vote if I'm mistaken. Okay, roll call vote, please.
No.
Johnson Santos.
Yes.
Jones.
Yes.
Lewis Velalta.
All right, it looks like it passes. So as of right now, we, are we bringing the mayor back in? We're going to bring the mayor and the, our attorney, Bill Vaughn, in. Thank you.
Okay, we're back. And we're now at 8B, public hearing. To receive public comment in consideration of an ordinance to amend and restate Article 34, Chapter 3 of Title IX of the Los Banos Municipal Code regarding density bonuses and other affordable housing development incentives. And we're going to go to Community and Economic Director Elms.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. There's a PowerPoint presentation with this item.
Okay.
And I'm going to warn you ahead of time that this is a very long and it can be a very complicated ordinance.
Did the attorney write it?
Yes, he did.
Oh.
Yes.
That's probably a lot long.
And his infinite wisdom. But it is state mandated law. And what we hope that we're proposing to present to you tonight is a much simpler version and a much friendlier read. So I'm just going to dive right into it. This is, density bonuses are in accordance to California state law, government code. Local governments are required to adopt local ordinance with state law. The City of Los Banos has had a density bonus ordinance since 2010. And then before that, it was 2006, the last rewrite was in 2010. And legislative updates have been adopted at the state level in the past nine years. And so the city needs to update to ensure it is in full compliance with state law. And when in doubt with a state mandate, the state mandate would trump our local law. So how it works, what we've tried to do with this, what our city attorney and I have tried to do is just to break this down into the most easiest way we can and to bite-sized pieces. So a developer would agree to produce qualifying projects in exchange for up to four things. So to apply for a density bonus, a developer would have to ask for the density bonus and would have to produce a qualifying project, which I'm going to get into that, in exchange for possibly four things. Those four things could be a density bonus, concessions and incentives, waivers of development standards, or parking reductions. This is in exchange, the city gets affordable housing or another qualifying project that is guaranteed to remain so for a specified duration. So how to qualify? So you'd have to meet the affordable housing levels, which you'd need to either be a very low income bracket, low or moderate. And then if it's a specialized qualifying need, it would be for housing for seniors, housing for foster youth, disabled veterans or homeless, or a land donation to develop affordable housing. So those are the criteria. I'm not going to get into the specifics of who gets 5% and what gets 10%. I'm going to give you an example that will hopefully help break that down. Because once we get into the percentages, it gets very confusing. So I'm trying to keep this as simple as possible. So I have a project example for you. This is something that the city attorney helped develop. So we're going to start off with if a developer came in with a base project with a total of 66 units apartment, it's a rental apartment project, and they asked for a density bonus and notified staff that they would be providing eight units, which would be affordable. We would do the math and the percentage of those eight units, eight units out of the 66 overall units is 12.1%. But according to the law, you would have to round up. So any fraction thereof, you would have to automatically round up, even if it's 0.1. So they would get 13%. The market rate units would be 58%, 58 units, excuse me, which are 87% of the project. And then the eligible density bonus for providing low income, they would get a minimum of 10% of the total project units because of that low income level. They would automatically get 20% density bonus. And then for exceeding the minimum 10%, because they're now providing us the 13% of affordable units, they get a percentage above that. So for exceeding the minimum 10% of low income units, you say, take the 13% minus 10% times 1.5 would equal 4.5%. So for each 1% of low income units over a minimum of 10% yields an extra 1.5%. So that's our math that we're showing. So the total density bonus would be 20% plus 4.5%, which would be 24.5%. And if I'm going too fast, please slow me down because I know this, this can get a little technical. So the density bonus units, you take the 66 units times 24.5%, and that would get a 16.2 units. But any fraction thereof automatically rounds up. So that would mean a total of 17 density bonus units.
Additional units.
In addition, so their base project was 66. Now it's plus 17.
Okay.
So this would give us 83 units in total. 58 market rate units, eight low income units, and 17 density bonus units. So I'm a very visual person, and I wanted to break this down in a way that you could see. So the yellow is the market rate units, which are the 58 units. Eight are the low income units, which are the target units. That's what helped the project qualify for that density bonus. And what's in blue is the density bonus. So if you can see, if you took the blue off of the graph, that's what that project would be if the state didn't require a density bonus. And if the city didn't have a policy to allow density bonus, you wouldn't have the blue units at all. So that's why the state has required local jurisdictions to adopt density bonus ordinances so that we can incentivize affordable housing builders to build. And this is a way to do it.
So is this on a given lot size?
No. So it's based on the density. So if this particular project, their maximum density was the 66 units, they were already at their maximum density per our municipal code, this would be in addition to.
All right. So on, on the same lot?
Yes.
Okay. All right. So what's the cap on this? Could they do the yellow, the red, and the blue all in, in low income and then double that on that same lot?
There's a maximum of 30%.
Yes.
A maximum of 30%.
So.
So this illustration is showing you that without the red units set aside for low income, the, that, that particular piece of probably property could only have 66 units at the maximum. So that, that's what the illustration is trying to show you. Whatever zoning it is, whether it's R1, R2, R3, whatever it is, and the piece of property, say it's five or six acres, it could only have 66 units on it. What this illustration is showing you is that if the developer comes to the city and says, I'm going to restrict eight of my 66 units to very low income renters or buyers, that, that developer is allowed to add those 17 units that are in blue to the maximum of 66. So now you've taken a maximum of 66 units and you've converted it to 83, did you say?
Yeah.
83 units because of the eight units in the red.
On the same lot size?
On the same acreage size.
Acreage size.
Yeah. Obviously, in our one zone, it's four lots per acre, six lots per acre. So, you know, we're, we're taking a situation where there's going to be multiple units, larger, larger sized piece of property.
Yeah.
So you can see in this illustration, they're almost getting, the density bonus is adding 24% to the total number of units that they could otherwise have on that property without the affordable units.
Okay, okay.
Okay.
All right.
I do, so.
So that, that calculation goes all the way through very low, low, moderate income, depending on what those red one, red units are going to be. It, that, that drives what the formula is going to allow for the density bonus units.
Okay. But the color red applies to low, medium, or?
Well, in this, in this.
For both, for density, for, for bonus in this, in this example.
And this illustration is very low, right?
It's low income.
It's low income.
Just low income.
Just low income.
So if it was, if they were very low, there, you would see more blue units.
Yes.
Because the, the, the way the math works out.
Then, then the math is different for very low as it is for low, as it is for moderate.
Yes. That's my next example. So I did want to, want to present an example with a specialized.
Oh.
Sure.
Wait, wait, Mrs. Lewis, go ahead.
So just for my clarification, these particular units on this example that you've given us is on a certain lot size based on what he's, what the sample offers as low, low density, I mean, low income. So does that mean that the, the project is going to be taller? You know, I'm not sure. Because if there wasn't anything there, if there were no low densities, you still have, let's say, five acres to put apartments on. But because you're getting this bonus and the bonus density, does that mean that they're going to be more compact and the, the building is going to be taller?
Less open space.
Wait a minute, Mr. Vaughn.
Because those are the other incentives. The other incentives are, once they get their bonus, you have to give them an incentive through the way of waivers of building standards to allow them to put all these units on this piece of property.
Okay. So that, that may mean that there won't be green space or?
True. Or you could have, say, say they were like duplexes, they would have less front yard, less backyard, maybe they're stacked two-story, something like that. Whereas if without this density bonus, they would be stuck with those 60, 66 units would be the max. So there are other incentives that allow them waivers of the building standards to make this work for them. So if the physical layout of the land doesn't work for them with this many units, they're entitled to ask for incentives and waivers of building standards to make it work for them.
So the more acreage that a particular owner may have, and the more low, moderate, or very low income housing they want to provide, the bigger their density bonus is, which means that.
Up to, up to a max.
Up, up to a max of 33, 30% or 33.
I think it's 30% on.
And it, so it wouldn't be based on their acreage, it's based on the amount of target units they're providing. So the amount of low income units that they're going to provide, or very, very low, or whatever specialized type units they provide. So it wouldn't be based on their acreage.
Well, that, that 30% is incremental depending on the size of the lot.
Yeah, it tops out. So if there were more red squares in this illustration, you would see more blue squares as well, as well. So the, the, the number of total units would expand to a maximum depending on how many red squares you had.
And I was just trying to imagine this in my mind because some of the samples that were in the package showed green space and, you know, they were two-story, some taller than that, and one looked like a hospital. So.
One of the biggest incentives is parking.
Yeah.
Is the, the decrease in the parking requirement.
Well, that's if you're close to public transportation.
I don't, I think that's one of the incentives.
Yeah, to decrease parking.
Yes.
Yeah. Okay. Thank you.
Okay. So the next illustration, the next example is a specialized example. So with these particular units, oh, it's for at least 10%. I need to go back. It's for at least 10% of the proposed units are designated for very low income for 55 years and are targeted for the specialized housing types that follow, the following example applies to. So this particular project is special in that it's for very low income. It's, the duration is for 55 years, so it's deed restricted for 55 years, and it's targeted for specialized housing. So it's, it's suggesting 66 rental units, seven of the units are very low income, and they're restricted for 55 years, the deed restriction for disabled veterans. So you would have to meet that special housing bracket. It could be for homeless, foster youth. So there is a special qualifying factors. And then what you would take to figure out the percentage of the affordable units and the specialized, it's those seven units that they're providing divided by 66 units, units, excuse me, equals 10.6. And any fraction thereof, like I said before, you automatically round up. So it would be 11% of the units are affordable. So the eligibility density bonus for specialized housing bonus would be 20% of the seven units. And then the standard bonus, it's that 11% because they were very low income units. They were, they were for very low income, so they automatically get the 35% of the 66 units. So if you just take the total density bonus just for the specialized housing, you take that 20% times seven, which would equal 1.4 units, rounding up, they would get two units just for the total specialized housing. And then for the standard density bonus, they would have the 35% times 66 units, 23.1 units. Automatically, you would round that one up as well. So.
24 units?
Yes, would be 24 units. I know, my math was wrong there. It's 24 units. So it's 59 market rate, seven specialized, and 24, it's actually, should be 26. Thank you, Mayor, for catching that, on the specialized plus the standard, because you have the 24 plus the two units. This is just an illustration to show, the yellow's market rate, you have a few very low income units, and then you get the rest, which is the blue, which is the density bonus.
And they could be at market rate?
They can be at market rate.
Okay.
And that's the incentive technically to the developer.